The council, we're meeting together for the first time in my experience. So this is in regards to duplex housing code. And Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks all of you for coming. Appreciate this opportunity to kind of talk about this topic in a kind of a larger setting. And so I'm going to start off just by turning it over to Clint and let him walk us through kind of the why we're here and the basics, and then we can get into the rest of the discussion.
Yeah, good evening tonight. Tonight, the city council and planning commission are going to be holding a joint work session to consider the policy framework necessary to comply with House Bill 2001, which was passed by the legislature in 2019. This bill requires medium cities like Hermiston with a population between 10,000 and 25,000 to accommodate duplex housing in all residential zones that permit single-family dwellings. So in Hermiston's case, all residential zones permit single-family dwellings, so all of our codes will require some amendment. Hermiston is required to adopt these standards by June 30th of this year. In the event that new regulations are not adopted by that time, then the state has prepared a model duplex code for small cities, which would be in effect until the city adopts its own local regulations. So to adopt these new standards, Hermiston has received a grant from DLCD. The grant provides technical assistance with the code language and the adoption process. It also provides assistance with House Bill 2003, which requires the city to update its housing needs analysis and buildable lands inventory, and to develop recommended strategies for providing housing. And to do this, we have paired with Angelo Planning Group and Johnson Economics, and their contract runs through June 15th of this year. So as far as the House Bill 2003 and the housing needs were, that's not the focus of tonight's discussion. The need for housing and where it will be provided in the future is really a fairly straightforward process, and the planning commission's been doing a great job reviewing and working with Angelo on those ones. But that being said, we've had some very spirited discussion regarding how best to implement and adopt the duplex housing standards. And so they've requested that a joint session with the city council be held to review these duplex housing requirements and determine the best and the most representative policies moving forward. You know, what will be the best options for the city. There are specific things that must be addressed when the city complies with the regulation. Density regulations, for instance, do not apply to duplex dwellings, so if the city establishes a four units per acre standard or something like that, under the OARS that implement the legislation, duplex housing is still considered exempt from those and can go above those regulations. There is no more than one parking space can be required per duplex unit, so this leads to an issue of parking density that has been very problematic for us. It's important to note that developers may provide more than one space voluntarily, but that's the maximum that the city can require for a duplex. And the duplexes, when they're being reviewed, must be subject to the same clear and objective design standards that apply to our single-family dwellings now. So in our regulations, we provide clear and objective standards for lot coverage, setbacks, parking, and building maintenance. So all of those are what we can also apply in duplexes. In front of you, that came in late this afternoon, was a letter that we received from Thousand Friends of Oregon. We'll go ahead and make that Thousand Friends letter a part of the record that will then be presented at any future hearing. It's important to note that a work session such as this is not a public hearing. It's not subject to the same testimony requirements as a hearing, and the city council only chooses to allow or disallow public participation during a work session. I want to go ahead and introduce our consulting team, specifically Darcy, sitting next to me, from Angelo Planning, and she's traveled here to be here tonight. I really felt it was important to have face-to-face representation dealing with an issue as important as this. We also have several people online via Zoom who are not visible on the screen right now, but trust me, they're there. We have CJ Doxy from Angelo Planning, and we have Anne DeBeau and Robert Mansolio from DLCD, also helping out tonight. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Darcy to kind of run through where we are and how we got here.
Good evening, everybody. I had tried to speak up. I didn't think about the mask business. This is the first public meeting I've had since the shutdown in the spring, so you are my coming-out-to-spring meeting, so thanks for having me. And I was just going to take a little of your time to run through very quickly just a handful of slides, again, just to give you a kind of a grounding of where we're at with the housing code-related update. You know, pretty short project, fairly straightforward as far as the objectives, really wanting to get Hermiston's code compliant with the new Oregon rules. We are pairing up this project with the buildable lands inventory, the housing capacity analysis, the measures for needed housing, that other project that Clint mentioned, that we are being helped by Johnson Economics with that project. And they're kind of matching up the projects that are going hand-in-hand. At the end of this code project, we are intending to provide legislative amendments that you can adopt right away. That is the objective. There is a timeframe for compliance, which is the end of June. With the other project, we also will leave you with a finished product from the consultant's side, again, with the help of their advisory committee, the planning commission. We hope to get that in good shape, but you could also adopt your housing capacity analysis, if you wish, but not necessarily by that hard deadline of June 30th. So as Clint said, you are considered, Hermiston's considered a medium-sized city. Really have two options. One is to modify the code that you have. And when we say development code, just sort of generically, we're looking at your zoning ordinance and your subdivision ordinance. Or if we can't kind of get you there to where you're comfortable with those changes, there is the model code available, as Clint mentioned. We said adopt the model code, really, you'd be applying the model code as you were contemplating further changes to your development ordinance. So the other thing that we are looking at is clear and objective standards for housing in Oregon. All housing is needed housing, so there needs to be a path to approval that doesn't require subjectivity, that there's really no interpretation or discretion involved. So to have that track, we want to make sure that Hermiston has that available for new housing. So we started our project with an audit of the development code, the subdivision and zoning ordinances. That was our first step, just to see what was going on and how it had matched up with the new rules. And really, you guys are in good shape. The development code's largely consistent, largely compliant with House Bill 2001. Most of the siting and design standards are consistent. You allow duplexes already in four out of your five residential zones. Again, that's, you're starting out really good baseline. Some jurisdictions don't allow duplexes in their residential zones or all their residential zones, so you are pretty much there, so our task is kind of easy. But then we kind of looked at what things might need to change to be 100% kosher, if you will, with the new rules. So we're looking at criteria for infill, making sure that that's applicable to duplexes, that setbacks are the same for duplexes as they are for single-family detached. And then just clarify, duplexes can be cited on lots that are smaller than the lot size requirements of the underlying zone. That's the last report there. Allowed use, of course, we have one, a low-density residential zone that doesn't currently allow duplexes. And from a kind of amendment standpoint, it's a very easy fix. Of course, it's not without implications, but as far as what needs to change in the tax, pretty easy job for us there. And then the parking requirements. As Clint mentioned, that duplexes are only required to have two off-street parking spots. Right now, you have a per-unit standard, thereby kind of doubling the amount of parking that can be allowed. So we want to make those changes, or we'd need to make those changes, to be consistent with the OAR. And then there are just a number of changes that would need to be amended, or texts that would need to be amended, to make sure that your lot sizes are the same for duplexes as they are for single-family. So as you, in your status report, as you note, there's also other ways that you could address that consistency issue, again, making sure that what's required of single-family detached is the same as what you're required for duplexes, and you can talk about those options? Is that answered?
Yes.
Okay. And then terminology, again, just making sure that, that the terminology for duplexes for, I'm losing my place here because duplexes are, clarify, two-family dwellings are the same as, because there are, pardon me, there are uses that are permitted outright into those zones. So again, minor modifications to make that clear that they are allowed in those zones. And then the off-street parking table, again, the per-dwelling unit, we're recommending that be struck, so it's clear that you're only requiring two parking spaces, off-street parking spaces. As again, Clint said, does not preclude developer from adding more or having more off-street. It just wouldn't be requiring them. And then this is the really very minor changes to your subdivision ordinance. This is really just looking at language that is a little squishy and tightening that up so that the standards, the requirements are very objective. That, we have some next steps coming up, and I am available to help answer questions.
Okay, so any questions for Darcy?
Yeah, the city council's coming into this a little, a little on the cold side compared with the work that the planning commission's been doing since September. Most of the changes really are pretty perfunctory, and our goal has been to do, I guess what you would say, minimum compliance in order to meet the intent of the legislature. Where we've really run into one of the bigger issues, and where the planning commission's really looking to get some policy direction, is when we start doing duplexes as an outright use in some of our zones that have smaller lot sizes, or even how we took our R1 size, for instance, from 8,000, or from 9,000 to 8,000 back to 2017, that was with the assumption that there would be single-family dwellings from now on, and now you have the potential to do two-family dwellings on those 8,000 square foot lots. There's no requirement that duplexes would then become the default option, but it is something to think about. How, with the lot sizes that we have, will the density within neighborhoods start to be impacted, and how will especially on-street parking start to be impacted if we move forward as we're going?
So what, what options are basically available to us at this point?
Well, there, really, there's three policy directions. We can, we can maintain the existing lot sizes that we have, which are 8,000 square feet in our R1 zone, would then be a single-family and a two-family dwelling, and then 6,500 in the R2 zone would be a single-family and a two-family dwelling lot size, and then 5,000 square feet in the remaining three zones for the single-family dwelling. So basically, we'd be taking the current lot sizes, the 8,000, the 6,500, and the 5,000, and then making them permissible for both one and two-family dwellings. Right now, our zoning ordinance has set up the smallest lot size, 8,000, 6,500, and 5,000 is for single-family only, and then there's a larger lot size for doing duplexes. So in the R2 zone, for instance, it's 8,000 square feet, and in the R3 and R4 zones, it's 6,200. So it's, that's one thing, is maintain the status quo, but allow duplexes on the smaller lot sizes that we have for single-family. Second would be to up all of the lot sizes to a different standard, and third would be in a hybrid of some sort, you know, whether it's making your duplex lot size your default single-family lot size, for instance, or something. Those are really the three options that we have. One of the things that I did do after request of the planning commission was kind of look at some of the other cities around us and see where they had their single-family and two-family lot sizes. And you have that chart and graph in front of you, it was included in your packet. And Hermiston, surprisingly, is actually one of the larger minimum lot sizes in the region. We're larger than Umatolo, we're larger than Stanfield, we're about the same with Echo and Boardman, and a little larger than Pendleton, and quite a bit larger than Kennebec. So if we want to be able to maintain a low per-lock cost, the best way to do that is to have smaller lot sizes. That helps you to defray the cost of all of your public infrastructure improvements at the time of development, but doing that changes the character of your neighborhood, too. So it really becomes a policy discussion at this point, more than a strict map.
Comments from the planning commission?
My name is Ron. I'm from Florida. The State HP 2001, that does not require the city to require a duplex on any lot. Are they just allowed, is that the way it works?
That's correct, yeah. It, HP 2001 says the city has to allow a duplex on any lot that allows for a single-family dwelling now. So that means that no one's required to build a duplex, but now you have that option. Just like we have the ADU provision that any lot with a single-family dwelling can have an ADU. No one says you have to put in an ADU at the back of your rec yard, but people do have that option now. And when you're doing planning for future development, DLCD recommends that you use about a 3% for what would probably be likely to convert from a single-family to a two-family or receive that sort of infill. So it's not, it's not a large amount, but definitely has that option.
I don't think I see too many duplexes in our future due to this particular bill, but because we have so many residential R1s and R2s available out there, even though we allow them, it's not going to have that big of an impact on future building things as far as what I can see.
Mr. Ryan, I'm going to go to the microphone. My question had to do more with safety. I wanted to know, like, from the chief, you know, whether one poses more of a challenge, you know, safety-wise, versus the other options, if there was a better option for safety from a safety standpoint?
I thought I was just going to sit here and not have to say a word. I don't have any information right offhand. The obvious for me is, you know, the more people congregated in one small area, the more likely it is for problems or a problem to arise. So having said that, we have a pretty aggressive landlord agreement and flow of information from the police department to landlords and property owners to advise them of what's going on at their properties, you know, when they're not there watching them. So, but I don't really have any information offhand that they do.
Do we have completed a housing capacity analysis? Is that still in the works?
It's in the works, but as, as far as what the draft of it shows, is that Hermiston has a need for about 2,600 to 2,800 housing units over the next 20 years, and we have the capacity to deliver about 10,000.
As you say, housing at 2,600, 2,800, that housing could be a duplex?
There's actually, in the housing capacity analysis, we break it down where it winds up being about 2,000 single-family and about 200 manufactured dwellings, and then the remainders would be multifamily in various forms of two-family and three-family larger complexes.
And you mentioned there was an inventory done on duplexes, and is there, do we need to have that information here, on the inventory of the current housing?
That is part of it. What we have, has the housing capacity analysis and our buildable lands inventory have an inventory of what our current ones are. It's not part of the packet that we sent out, but the city council will be seeing it at the end, probably May.
Okay.
So I have kind of a do guy question. When we're talking, and kind of are, yeah, part of it in regards to single-family dwellings and sort of things, and then we're talking manufactured homes, so do we have very specific zoning requirements for where you can and cannot have a manufactured home? So you have a stick-built house next to a manufactured home, using smaller lot sizes, thereby making it easier for people to get into a house for the first time?
Actually, in Oregon, any lot that can have a single-family dwelling can also have a manufactured dwelling. So there's no, we don't treat, from a zoning standpoint, manufactured dwellings and stick-built houses any differently. Where we do see a slight difference is that the city has a minimum development standard for manufactured dwellings. So if I, if I purchase a lot and I want to put a manufactured dwelling on it, that needs to be at least a double wide and 1,000 square feet. Where people want to do the smaller ones that are the, the single wides under 1,000 square feet, those are limited to park zone.
And here's, you know, again, possibly silly question, what about the whole tiny home that? And the fact that, you know, we are also as a city looking at possibly, you know, trying to figure out our homelessness issues and that sort of thing, and just trying to bring to a possible solution in the future. In fact, the tiny homes are basically just really, really can't be, you know?
Right now, we don't have any limitation or anything that prohibits somebody from doing a tiny home, and with the ADU provisions, anybody can bring in a accessory dwelling that can be free manufactured and put that on and treat that as a rental on their property. So we're fairly, not progressive, but we're where we need to be for, in compliance with the state law for those things. And then when I say in my previous remarks that Hermiston as a medium city between 10,000 and 25,000 needs to provide duplexes, when Hermiston crosses that 25,000 threshold in probably about 15 years, there's another provision of the House Bill 2001 that kicks in for cities over 25,000, which is all residential zones have to also allow, in addition to duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and what they call a cottage cluster, which would be basically a tiny home development.
Okay, and so we are just now doing the census, windows, and next number's coming out for we, how many people actually live here?
I'm sorry, I just can barely hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So we're just now doing the census? When are we going to find out how many people live here?
Oh, that will be late this year, early, early next year. And I bet you with the census, we'll probably go from 18 to, I bet you it'll go up a little bit, 19 probably.
Mr. Martin?
Of the newer developments that we've had here lately, within the past year or so, how many of them have duplexes?
There are duplexes on Northeast Eighth Street, up by Duncan Center. That is really the only one I can think of that's been putting in duplexes. And he, they've been doing that on their corner lots because it just helps take advantage of the corner lot a little better. But I can't think of any others that have been doing it.
And no plans, Stu?
No.
Clint, I just heard to be a question of how it relates to parking. I know parking's been one that I'm concerned because we're actually losing parking capacity with this proposal. The square foot of a duplex The square foot of a duplex, is it going to be governed by setbacks then, or what governs the size of a, a square footage of a duplex?
Yeah, it would, it would be, it would be governed by lot coverage and setbacks. Yeah, we have up to forty-five percent lot coverage on our residential zones, forty in the R one, forty-five in all the other zones. So that limits your footprint, but that, you can still go up.
So from the pictures that we saw on the, on the presentation, do you have the idea what size of duplexes are? And I'm wondering how many bedrooms these duplexes have, and whether or not there's any opportunity maybe related to lot size that would help us manage parking, kind of a roundabout way of doing it, but possibly with the number of bedrooms that a duplex can have?
Unfortunately, the, we are precluded from regulating parking based on duplex, or based on bedrooms.
I know directly, but indirectly, if they're, they're limited to how big they can be, a square footage, we might not have as many bedrooms, and thereby might not have many needs for parking space. I know it's kind of a roundabout way of trying to control that, but, you know, if you have large duplexes, they could have, you know, three or four cars each.
Is the public allowed this meeting?
This meeting has been really just a work session for discussion among the planning commission and the, and the city council, and so there would be, there would be no decision made tonight, and it'll be a public hearing where the public would be able to address this topic.
I heard they have property that's going to be zoned for duplexes. So I have something to say if you're willing to listen.
That'd be up to you.
Yeah, well, listen, we'll hear what you have to say. Set up here to the, the police, say your name and.
Sure.
Ray White.
My name is Troy White. I live at seven eighty-five East Opal Court here in Hermiston. We have property across the movie theater.
Hold on a second, I'll give the mic. Hold on.
I live at seven eighty-five East Opal Court here in Hermiston. We have property across the movie theater, and it's going to be zoned in July for House Bill 2001. And we can do five thousand square foot lots, would probably be the minimum, and you can do a two-story. You're only going to be allowed to park in front of the units, which would be one car per unit. You can't park on the street. So this situation, you wouldn't have that scenario. And the, probably most likely it's going to be a two-to-three bedroom, never a four. I don't think you can fit four-bedroom on a lot that, anywhere from sixty-five hundred to five thousand square feet. I think you're going to be in the other categories. So if you have any questions regarding that, I've been following this since day one on the House Bill 2001, because our property actually hits that center. Any questions on that?
I'll just, I'll give you the unit. Appreciate your input, sir. So, Mr. Spencer, where do we go from here?
Well, I know at one point I saw Commissioner Doherty going towards the microphone, right when Commissioner Sheffield was saying something, and I know, we haven't heard from him yet, so definitely want to get that in state.
Likely a bit of a rabble rattle here. Well, definitely. So, first off, there's been a, my part, a number of people, frustration with the way it has to come down, but it has come down, and we have to comply. That they said there are certain sticking points that, from our development standards, we on the planning commission really started with the parking, and that is the main in particular, because if any of these new developments that have gone in, currently, there's a on-street parking issue problem. And that's with the current lot sizes, single-family homes, not with the, could potentially be double density. I don't think anybody suspects that's actually going to happen, but it's going to be an issue ongoing, and it's only going to get worse. As a commissioner, that's the number-one issue that has, comes to me from constituents is, you know, why can't we walk down our sidewalk because there's trucks parked over the edge of the sidewalks? Why do we, why is there roads covered with cars on both sides, and they're very narrow lanes, and cars cannot pass each other? This is on brand-new roads, not on older roads. And this will affect infill in those older roads that are even more condensed, small, narrow. And so the, we're already faced with a certain issue there, and this presents us with what looks like it's going to be a worsening of that problem. And so we, in general, have, as Clint said, moved towards something of a sort of a minimal compliance attitude. One is, you know, it's, it's great that people think that people are going to limit themselves to one car and not park on the street. However, that's going to be a city policing and filling. Code enforcement is going to be a thing, I assume, or it's going to be required neighborhood association to, to attend to. It exists currently in Hermiston. And so the actual reality of Hermiston is, we will have a bunch of people parking these And without significant additional code enforcement money being spent, we're going to be double So one thought that we had was to return to the density that we had two years ago, at the eight thousand square foot minimum size, I think it was, I can't even remember off the top of my head, and I don't have the spreadsheet, but.
The previous lot sizes were nine thousand in the R one, seventy-five hundred in the R two, and six thousand in the R three, R four.
So go back to what we had two, two, three years ago. This, another thought that comes to mind is, we can have density, we don't currently have density restrictions, but we could have density restrictions under the law, it just would have to be, like, evenly. And so having some, excuse me, some sort of thing that says X number of units per acre could happen, and then how that gets split up between single-family and duplexes would be, you know, up to the developer. And the question there that, you know, that I think we all see is that, how does that apply to future developments? That's something that's currently a single-family home, and then gets split into duplexes. And in some of these old, older neighborhoods, you can foresee a lot of that sort of thing happening. And so I know that we were worried about going forward with any particular avenue without talking to you guys first, because we can come up with a solution, and if it, and if you guys don't agree, if you don't like it, then we wasted two months in a really narrow timeframe to get this stuff passed. And so that's why we wanted to come and hear from you, I guess, which direction we should be looking. Thank you.
So in regards to this type of thing, what, you know, what is our, what are our best-case scenario, worst-case scenario option?
Well, I really think that worst-case scenario would be, we worry about larger lot sizes and some of the things that might be associated with that. Mostly, most of these would come from more of a city administration end, when I, when I consider those things like takings considerations. If you bought twenty acres of land with the assumption you're going to subdivide it with five thousand square foot lots, and now you find that you're having to do six thousand square foot lots or a larger size, the city has taken your ability to develop at the density that you planned to and made the investment, and there are measures in place that the city has to comply with to either compensate or allow development at the previously allowed density. I think that that would be one thing. Certainly, knowing that Thousand Friends of Oregon, with this letter, is already trying to push towards the maintaining the status quo of our lot sizes. City, of course, anytime you open up a land use decision, you open yourself up for appeals, and then taking those through L U B A. Trying to think what, the best case would be, we, we maintain the status quo with our current lot sizes, but it is going to cause issues. There, there will be on-street parking issues. It's just, it is what it is. The, the legislation and the rulemaking were written in such a way to assume that everybody had one vehicle and a bike, and that's not the practical life in Hermiston.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to offer just a little bit of history, as we, and I know everybody knows this, but just maybe a reminder of, you know, a few years ago, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, the council charged staff with trying to figure out what could we do to encourage more housing and do those kinds of things. And so one of the things we did is, we held a session with the planning commission, invited the development community in, and they brought forward a number of ideas, one of which was that shrinking of our lot sizes, again, to make the development more affordable from their standpoint, and being able to build houses that were more and more, because the land was cheaper in that way. So that was something that, that we did to do that, and in my opinion, I think that's been very successful. We've seen a lot of development after that, after that time. I, you can't attribute all of it to those changes, but I think you can attribute some of that. And then there were a number of other things, encouraging, you know, we, we did some public investing in infrastructure in different places. We've begun to do more of that, and so that would be another encouragement to development by, by investing public dollars. And so one of the things that, you know, I see as I hear Commissioner Doherty talk about, you know, trying to go to the larger lot sizes, I, to me, that what that does to the development community, if we heard them right the first time, is more duplexes, not less, potentially because the larger lot sizes, they want to get more units on that. And so, you know, that's another thing. Now, the, I haven't really thought through the option of a density requirement, but again, like Clint said, I'm a little worried about, you know, Thousand Friends is watching a lot more closely now with that letter. We can tell that they're watching what we're doing, and so anything that they perceive, which may not be true, but that they perceive, it's going to, we're going to have to fight it and defend it at L U B A. And so, you know, just, those are just some of the thoughts about all these factors that I think need to be in the, in the consideration.
I have, I have a question myself. So do we have a code for on-street parking, or any, any requirements for on-street or off-street parking at this point in time?
Oh, the first one. Right now, the code is set up that you're not allowed to count on-street parking towards your required parking spaces, so that you are, if you're required to provide one parking space, that's on your property. That is not the space in front of your property, on the street. That's your driveway, or your garage, or whatever. Where, where there is on-street parking, that is public parking, so anyone can use it, and a vehicle can use it for up to seventy-two hours, and then it has to be moved. And code enforcement does go around and chalk wheels for that. And I also wanted to kind of turn the mic over to Darcy, because she does have some further background on the O A Rs that regard, relate to the density question that's come up.
Right, and I can just say, maybe to, to add on to the, the parking issue, that the impetus for House Bill 2001 really was to provide more housing choices, and, and to allow for duplexes, not mandate, but have more opportunities for their development just simply by having them allowed in all residential zones where single-family is allowed. And, and one of the expenses, of course, is land, and requiring more off-street parking means you're parking more than you're providing housing square footage, so that all just kind of factors into the cost of, of building housing. So again, the idea of not requiring more than two would, you know, give builders more flexibility, maybe match ways when markets been actually there. On the density issue, also to allow for more flexibility, to provide duplexes, density maximums, while you can have density maximums in your residential zones, they can't apply duplexes. So duplexes are, are really off the table now with the, the new O A R.
So I, I'm, I am, me personally, a little fuzzy on the H O As, and what they can allow and disallow for parking on-street. Is that something that they can control?
I, I believe they can make, make requirements of that, yes. So, I mean, I think in those instances, it would limit the number of cars that someone might have on the property, but also limit, you know, that, you know, those of us who like to store things in garages rather than park cars in them, it would encourage people to park cars in them. So, but, and H O A can do a lot of those things under their kind of private law, you know, to public requirements.
One of the things that's worked really well here in town is on Northeast Eighth Street, where we have the townhouse developments, south of Theater Lane. When you look at the townhouses, they pretty much are all driveway, so there's no way to physically park in front of most of these. So the H O A has limited the on-street parking, and then the developer came in as part of his planning and development process, and actually created off-street parking areas that are maintained by the H O A. And that's working really well. But again, limiting yourself, being limited to the one space per unit, the city would have a difficult time putting that into the P U D process, but that is a way that an H O A has addressed the issue.
Can I, real quick, tag on to that a little bit? So first off, H O As, you know, in order to enforce anything, they need to have something, it's a private enforcement mechanism, so it's not through the city, et cetera. And most of ours have, are toothless here in town. That particular one south of, south of Theater is a good example, however, there was a two, a two per, two off-street per unit there, so that's why they set up those extra spots. They didn't, maybe they would have done it anyway for their livability purposes, but they didn't do it out of the kindness of their heart, in which they had to do it. And so to, to assume that, that, that that's going to be the way that duplex developments are going to happen, it may not, well, it probably won't be the case. going to happen, it may not, well, it probably won't be the case. And I guess, finally, I just want to make sure to reiterate that the house bill also took the teeth out of any covenants, et cetera. So you couldn't, in your HOA, as far as I can tell, that you could no longer say, well, you need two still. They are also bound to this. So anything that they have in their covenants that say, contrary, that say you need two off-street would go away in the case of, that correct? And so, you can't really count on covenants, TCRs and HOAs to solve the problem for us because they also are controlled by this bill.
What is the current most popular lot size? Developers in the city, what lot size are they going for for most of their houses? Are they going for the smaller 6,000 or are they building bigger lot size?
You know, it really does depend on the developer, what their business model is and where they choose to go. Because I haven't seen a lot of lots that are in our R3 and R4 zones that have developed at a larger lot size than the 5,000 to the 6,000 square feet. Generally, they match in right at where their lot sizes are permitted in the zone. The one exception that I've seen has been the Wolf Run subdivision, which is south of Getman Road, and he had an 8,000 square foot lot size. He tried to slot in quite a bit bigger than those, generally around 9,000 to sometimes even up to 14 on some of the corner called the sack lots.
Council President?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Planning Commission, for being here. I had, and thank you, Mr. Doherty, for giving a very concise overview of what the planning commission is looking for and exactly what direction they want from counseling. I do have a couple of questions, and maybe this has already been cleared up, but in terms of parking, I hear that's our biggest issue. What types of resolutions do we have? If I'm hearing correctly, it's upping the lot size. Would that be a resolution? Or I guess what are the resolutions in order for parking? Or is that something that's just going to be ongoing? I think I'll direct that off the plan.
Well, lot sizes and parking requirements are kind of independent of each other. Because just because you have a bigger lot doesn't mean that you're suddenly going to have four parking spaces. The city still can only require one per unit. Now, I hate to say, throw this on the goodness of the court, but in most cases, the market is going to dictate a garage or a storage unit as well as a driveway to get to that garage or storage unit. So you have a de facto two, even when you have a limit of one, just because in our code now, your garage counts as a parking space. So, it's something to think about, but there's no mandate that you have a garage.
So the inside of the garage and the driveway itself counts too?
Yeah.
I guess when I, when I'm hearing about the density and parking itself, I already start thinking about a lot of the single-family households that we already have, probably have multi-generational families that are living in them, hence why I see a lot of cars everywhere, even if it's a single-family household. So, I, the way I'm seeing these duplexes come around and then the way I see the lot sizes, if I heard correctly, upping the lot size would probably make the property more expensive and thus make it harder for people who are trying to move in to move in, unless I can guess that they're... I guess my question really is, are we looking to up the lot sizes? Is that, I heard that was part of the discussion.
I think that's really the key point of discussion is, is it worth pursuing larger lot sizes or maintaining the status quo in the zoning margins?
And along the lines, the kind of hybrid that Clint mentioned way back when in his original, was, the thought was, you could go back to the large lot size, but the slightly larger lot size, but then, and have a clear, concise, you know, defined way to build, you're automatically able to build at that lot size, but then have essentially a conditional use type of a, of a process that would allow you to either to continue development or other, make for smaller lots based on the developer's plan. So, that would be the other thing that occurred to us, would be that kind of hybrid, that would allow...
Yeah, I just wanted to mention real quick, I know we spent a lot of time towards the end of our last meeting talking about dual routing, right? We, we can have two different alternate routes. We have a minimum standard that meets the state requirement, and then we can have another route that will potentially be like a fast one that we could talk about, that, you know, developers can pick, the state requirements can be met in this lane, and it's okay to have another lane if one of this lanes exists, correct? So there is a possibility of making this lane at a higher lot size that is, that meets the state standards and the lot sizes are larger, and then you can have that other lane that where we start to get back some of the control over what goes in those lots and allow a smaller lot size. Correct?
Well, yes and no. Yes, you can have parallel paths. You could even create a conditional use process that says, you know, you can go with a density development if you went down this other process. But the way that the legislation was crafted, if somebody went in and built single-family dwellings on that second path, they literally could turn around the next day and obtain permits for duplexes on those lots. And the city would not be able to prevent that.
So, here's an idea. If you guys are talking about paths going this way and that way, what if you had an area where, all right, bigger lots over here, and if you have an area with smaller lots, then you're gonna figure, all right, the people there, you're gonna, everyone has two vehicles, especially around here, we live in the movies, some of us, right? So what if we make some of those streets one-way and assume everyone's parking on the street? And that way, we don't have to worry about streets, you know, people having to cross each other. We just assume it's a one-way street. Is there a way we could zone for that? And then that way, those lots could be smaller and we assume everyone's parking on the street as they're gonna park one in the driveway and one on the road.
The city council does have the authority to declare streets as one-way. We haven't done that with, except for one street that was some standard, but the city council does have that ability. It's definitely not something we have considered to this point.
Well, you guys were talking about going different directions. Maybe we did that on purpose, that could kind of solve that smaller block situation and still give people place to park because people have to park.
Clint, could the one-way street be a development standard? That the reason required, not just that the council would do it, but that the developer would require it, would you do that?
Yes, that would be something, we'd have to develop a new standard, but certainly be an option.
For several years, the number one goal in our goal-setting sessions was housing. And that was our original reason for dropping these lot sizes, to try and entice more development. So, to what benefit is it that we make them larger ones? Because we did have quite some success in enticing development. That's my question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I, I think the discussion that I've heard in talking to Clint about, and other discussions the planning commission has had, it's more of a concern about, I mean, the increase of the lot sizes, trying to at least have enough land there that another parking place could be on the land. Again, we can't require the additional, but having a larger lot size with a duplex would theoretically allow for another parking space to be on the property. But I think that's, that would be the argument that I hear about why to go to a larger lot size. I don't know about putting people's mouths, but that's, and, you know, I'm not sure I agree with that, but that, I think that's the thinking, my off.
No, I don't think you're off. I think that, you know, one is hopefully that they, people would have put it in one. But two, there would be with other lot sizes, a little bit more frontage and stuff, so maybe, these would cut down on the, how many, any individual units would have parked on the street. It would maybe cut down overall free parking. And, you know, also, and I guess the more important thing was that then maybe we could have kind of the dual path, some type of thing, where we could then regain somehow over parking, off-street parking, because it would give developers an incentive to come in and try to get the more dense, the more densely the lot, but, you know, we could acquire something like this to off-street parking as a part of that conditional use process. And so that's the really, I think, well, to me, probably where we get the most things of going to a bigger. It's not without issues. I mean, going to a bigger, obviously, it has been successful, it's something that I think that we all bought into, is this, it's this overlay that's being forced down on us is what's causing the complication, not that that plan, I think, is working really well. But that plan is now changing on us whether we like it or not. And I guess the, I think we all are trying to make a livable, wonderful city, I think. I don't think there's somebody here that doesn't believe in Hermiston. And I think that's what our ultimate goal is, everybody. And maybe the right answer is, is to stick with our current densities, but we just want your guidance, whether, and if we start exploring this dual route, it's gonna take some time and energy that we don't want to do unless the city council's behind it.
Regarding that, Council President, I mean, I'm the newest planning commissioner, and so when this was put in front of us, I think I probably felt like some of you might feel right now, and I could be assuming that you all may have a much better grasp than I did, but I definitely felt like, Commissioner Doherty said, this has been forced upon us, and it has. And so, we've all, for some months, scratched our heads at what liberties do we have within this, and therefore what options do we have? And we really have very few options. So that's, that's not a good way to feel, like something's being forced upon us and we don't have any options. But one thing I, I think it's important for you to consider is that we must comply by the deadline, so we must comply by June, but that doesn't mean we can't pursue those options after June. So, yes, we have to take this pill and swallow it now, but we can certainly, with the creativity that is within our community and having more time to work with our developers, we can come up with better solutions than what we have right now. I don't feel like we're operating you a lot, as far as here's what our recommendations are. Personally, I don't support raising the lot sizes just because I feel like it does inhibit development and as a former career, someone who really needed people to want to move to Hermiston and really needed housing available for those folks, I don't want to do anything to limit that or to even cast the, cast a shadow of it's harder to develop Hermiston than it is other communities in our areas. So I just, I want us to be very, very careful with that. I think we adopt this to the minimum standard by the deadlines and then work downstream after that to come up with what's the best solution available to us.
I guess that would be kind of what our purpose, or, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to echo Tom's, Commissioner Ferenc's, as well. I mean, we're also in a, in a very competitive, geographically located area. We have the Tri-Cities up north, we still have development coming in around us, and it really is hard to get development in. The last few years, because of the development, housing, that we've been working on, we've had over 100 permits, I think, the last three years in a row. And I definitely don't want to cast that doubt either. Even raising the lot standards, I guess, if there were, I mean, that doesn't necessarily have to force the developer to be able to go ahead and do that. Maybe they could do something else with the extra allocated space that they have. And so that's also my concern, that, you know, just because there's additional lot space doesn't really compel them to have to create more parking. They could create anything else renovationally, maybe beautification, maybe more lot sizes. I know everybody in Hermiston is looking for something bigger than 5,000 square feet. So, I guess in light of that, I, I know the planning commission is looking for a recommendation from council. At this point, I'd like to say, I don't know if they're making decisions, they're gonna come out of today, but I guess what kind of guidance is the planning commission wanting from us before, before we end today?
I think kind of what we, what Doc was saying, there's, there's probably not a whole lot that we've done between now and June. The thought is, is it worth our time to pursue other options after June where we could possibly not have? Right? And I think, you know, that doesn't have to be limited to lot sizes, that doesn't have to be limited to density, but it could be trying to be creative on creating solutions for our community. I would say that, you know, Clint mentioned that the standards are gonna change if we get to 25,000 and said that's 15 years away. I would disagree with 15 years. And I think whatever, whatever sizes that we have for our lots now, if we're comfortable with those, that's fine, but we need to understand that the duplexes can be on those as soon as we get 25,000. So if we want to be ahead of the curve and be ready for planning for that, I think we should do that. Now, we have got a lot of new housing, and I think that's great, but if you drive through a lot of these neighborhoods that are, that are the new housing, there is a parking problem. Now, lot sizes is a way to attack that because it's, it's not requiring extra parking spaces to be built, but you are gonna be spreading housing away from them, right? That doesn't necessarily have to be the option, maybe it's widening streets, maybe it's requiring more distance on driveways so that cars aren't hanging over, parking are over the sidewalk. But those are things that we could pursue if the city council would support it. If not, then it's not really worth our time to do that.
The one thing I wanted to, to get to add is that the choice that we're kind of talking about isn't just between the status quo or two or three years ago, going back or a or two years ago. The thing that sort of precipitated this conversation is that in the R2 zone, it's a, it's a bifurcated zone, right? So the lot size is different for single-family residences than it is for duplexes. That won't be the case. And so, even within the status quo now, where we have two lot sizes within one zone, we're gonna have many choices, a bigger one or a smaller. So that's, I mean, that's not a question about going back to larger lot sizes from two years ago, that's just what we have right now. We take the bigger one or the smaller one. And that's kind of what initiated, I guess, this debate with us. And that's something we can do, hoping to get some guidance from you on that.
What are those sizes again, Clint?
Right now, the, in the R1 zone, we're looking at 8,000 square feet, that's for single family. In the R2 zone, we're at 6,500 square feet for single family and 8,000 for duplex. And in the remaining zones, we're at 5,000 for a single family and 6,200 for duplex.
Is there any recommendation from the council or staff on that R2 zone?
Well, generally... Well, generally, I, I feel that duplexes still work pretty well on the smaller lot sizes. Listening to the discussion tonight, I am seeing a very interesting path forward long-term where you really could create a carrot and stick approach and even allow for perhaps a greater density on like a 4,000 square foot lot, but in return, you need a 25-foot setback on your driveway so nobody's hitch is hanging over the sidewalk and you have to have more parking spaces or three parking spaces. So you have your path forward as status quo, complies with the law, but then you also have a way that allows even greater density, but with higher regulations. And I think that the planning commission's really got a good, a good idea going there.
I also appreciate, uh, Commissioner Gordon's recommendation also on maybe even potentially widening streets. I think those are creative ideas that definitely, at least we'll keep the parts straight apart because I will tell you, I myself have been hit twice with my car parked on the side of the street on a hit rim twice in the last two years. So I, I definitely know it's a problem and it sucks, not gonna lie. But I think creative solutions like that, setbacks as well, I think that brings a lot more to the table, especially now in the, in the short deadline that you guys have between now and June 30th.
So my understanding is that basically tonight, we need to come to a consensus as to what we want to have the planning commission work towards in the immediate future and in the long-term future? Is that what we're looking for?
Correct.
You guys think?
I, I guess I have a question. Does the planning commission have a preferred outcome of the direction that they see this go? Or is there a lot of internal debate about amongst yourselves about what you think would be the best route forward?
I, I think there's probably internal debate about what the actual best route forward would be. But I think that most of us, if not all of us, would agree that the meeting the state minimums by making these simple changes doesn't necessarily put us where we want to be. Exactly where we end up would require work sessions among ourselves to determine what that is and negotiate something that we can send to you. But I think, I don't think any of us are gonna be super happy with what the status quo would be with the state.
So I'd like to see the, currently the main character existing, right, law, renowned, currently. Who needs a known one?
Clarify, sorry. Do you mean the, the smaller lot size? Because within each of these zones, there's the two, right, that's it?
Yeah, I was, I was just agreeing with Clint when he spoke of just, um, maintaining our existing lot sizes. I know even the R2 is different for duplexes and R3 is different, but just maintain what we're doing currently. The minimum right now.
I would bring it up.
Yes, I, I'd also agree with that. I'd also support the planning commission looking into this at a later form plan or after the deadline's passed and see if there's anything creative that can come out of the planning commission in terms of trying to, to see what we can do to better serve Hermiston. Because I think at this time, between now and June 30th, it's, the time is just too crunch to make any big altering decisions. So I, I think if that's something that we're gonna work on, I think it's gonna have to be after the deadline.
I tend to agree with that, of course.
I would agree.
And I would agree with it with the idea that if we consider this more as an opportunity for growth and less of something that's being forced on us. And I think, I, at least I found in my practice in my office, that we do some of our best work when it's crunch time. And I have a feeling that's gonna be true of all of us. And so, and if we also look, okay, 15 years from now is gonna feel like tomorrow when we're there. So if we also kind of keep an eye on R8, you know, what, what are the infrastructure changes that are gonna come in? So let's start saving up for those because, you know, I've, I've been in that community and that stuff's expensive. So starting to think along those lines to about, you know, when the roads go in and there being help like that. So we'll, I think, that bringing that in, once we get through that, maybe do in the crunch time. Kind of having an eye out for that until we start saving up for those projects so we don't get the sticker shot later, I think that would be fantastic. And I really appreciate you guys bringing all this to us because it's a learning curve. And we appreciate your patience because this obviously is not my field, but I appreciate you bringing me into yours.
Can I give you guys the answer, the direction that you're looking for? All right. Do we have anything further on this?
I, I like where the thought's going, but I would consider maintaining a larger lot size though some are gonna be putting duplexes on. It's always gonna be easier in the future for us to shrink the requirement on lot size because that gives the developer more money than it is if we ever want to increase their lot size. Is that, if that's going to make any issues, if they want to use the smaller lot size?
And what else? All right, let's adjourn this work session and debatte the Act 7 part 4 of full council session.
Thank you, guys.
City Council Session Award. We appear to have a oral, with the mayor being excused. Stand for questions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody to today's council session. Those of you just joining us, we had a work session, a joint work session with the Planning Commission, a very good discussion. Got two things going in the right direction, it sounds like. Good input from my own buddy. Appreciate everybody's participation. So at this point in time, it is time for citizen input on non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do so to do the following. Limit your discussion to not more than five minutes. State your name and address, and direct your comments to me at the chair. And please, any comments, if you need to make sure your microphone is turned off. So, at this time?
Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Parsons. I'm a sergeant with the Hurmiston Police Department, and I wanted to take an opportunity to visit with y'all for just a couple of minutes here this evening. I don't know if you, or many of you are aware, but I have put in my retirement papers effective April 1st, and after three decades of doing what I've done, I've had the opportunity to walk away. My lovely wife, Wendy, has accepted a job in Lewiston to be the manager of surgical services at St. Joseph's Regional Medical Center over there. That valley is where I grew up, and so I had the opportunity to move home. But the reason I want to address the council this evening is that 11 years ago, Chief Edmiston and then Chief Dan Cologne hired me on as a code enforcement officer. And I was kind of in a spot in my life where I wasn't exactly sure if I was done in law enforcement, or if I was still had a little bit left in the tank. Chief Edmiston took an opportunity, and took a chance on me in January 2012, and hired me back in a full-time spot, and shortly after that promoted me to supervisor position. And I just wanted to express my appreciation, not only to Chief Edmiston, but to you, City Council. Some of you have been in your seats since I started this crazy ride with Hurmiston, Jackie and Lori, Doug and Rod and Gary, who used to sit beside me in the office back there when I was doing code enforcement stuff. But the reason I wanted to bring this up is I have watched how you guys have really put your heart and soul into how you manage things for the betterment of the citizenry of Hurmiston. And you all should be commended for what you do. A lot of people don't recognize the effort that it takes to draw business, to create job opportunities, to put in a facility like Eotech, and some of the things that I have seen transpire over my 11 years here. So, with that, I won't bore you anymore, but I will say thank you very much for the opportunity, Chief Edmiston especially, to serve the citizens of Hurmiston. I have truly enjoyed my time here. I couldn't have asked for a better place to end my career and retire. Thank you all.
Sergeant Parsons, before you wander off too far, we want to thank you and your family for your service, for your time that you put into the service of the state people of Hurmiston and the city of Hurmiston. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and congratulations, ma'am. Now, now he gets to start the real work.
He's kept man from here on out.
I know the feeling. So, I wish you and your family well, and wish you greater and better things.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for the citizen input? Seeing none, it's time for the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items A through E. Are there any items that need to be removed or discussed? Are there any items that anybody who is present wishes to comment on? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to pre-consent of items A through D. Summoned. Moved by Mrs. Davis, seconded by Councilor Pardon. Bogal?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 And that is unanimous consent on items A through E. With that, we want to congratulate, oh boy, I don't want to, I don't want to butcher Mr. Manu Reyes's name, and Commissioner Sergeant Saylor Chaplinger and Mr. Harriman for their appointment to the committees. So, congratulations to those folks. No items have been removed from the consent agenda. We have next on our agenda is ordinance and resolutions, Resolution 2175 Airport Reconstruction, City Manager Smith.
Yes, I'll ask Mr. Morgan to run us through the project.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes, so this resolution this evening will simply give City Manager Smith authorization to apply for and accept federal grant funding for reconstructing the airport apron, the airport. That's basically the area where the airplanes park up at the airport. There is a sketch included in your staff report that shows the general area that would be reconstructed. This has been a project that's long been in the works. The Federal Engagement Administration, they provide grant funding to cover 90% of the cost of these types of projects. And so we've been gearing up for that for several years. We've been putting funds in the reserve to meet our potential obligation of about $200,000 for this $2 million project. So that was included in our currently adopted budget. Since that time, we were awarded a $150,000 state of Oregon grant to help meet our local match requirements. Also, there is rumblings from our airport engineers that they're hearing from the FAA, still being worked out that as part of the American Rescue Package that was approved by Congress recently, that the FAA is likely to fund all federal fiscal year '21 grants at 100% rather than 90%, in which case we wouldn't have any local match requirement. Unfortunately, we would have to not accept the state's funds. We would just come up with an additional $150,000 out of the deal. So, all that's to say is looking like our local financial obligation will be quite small, potentially zero, and so we'd likely be looking to divert some of those funds in the airport reserve into taking advantage of the fact that contractors here, at the same time rebuilding the apron to reconstruct the airport way entrance road in the airport, at a considerable savings versus doing it another way. So, as I mentioned, this resolution this evening just simply authorizes City Manager Smith to execute, apply for and execute grant agreements for that project. So, for that, I stand for any questions?
Questions from any on board?
When will that begin?
So, we're going to be opening bids this Thursday, and it's likely that construction will begin in early July, and run for about three months.
Well, let's hope the federal government comes through 100%. Because old Tom Peterson, free is always a good price. Okay, let's see. Are there any other persons that wish to comment on this? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2175 lay upon the records?
Summoned.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilor Davis, seconded by Councilor Meyer. Bogal?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 And motion passed unanimously. Moving on to number 10, February 2021 Financial Report, City Manager Smith.
Ask Mr. Kay to take this.
I'm going to do this sitting down. I got a bum toe. I'm trying to walk as well as possible. February is a good month. If I can get this working again. We always look at Europe to see what's going on. This past month, we made their bond interest payment that is due this year. So, things are looking good. They're 102% of projected property tax revenues at this point in time. My fears of COVID causing a problem with property tax occurred have been totally unfounded. We're actually doing better than planned on. Looking at our resources in the general fund, we're about almost $700,000 in the variance. Total revenues to date have been really rebounding, kind of nice. I would tell you this month that we are ahead on our resources. We finally got a charter franchise payment. We had our liquor enforcement and our state revenue sharing funds into the general fund. So, we're a little bit ahead on that count for this month. Timing has not been the best thing for the state in regards to these funds. On the discretionary, on the spending side, we've done a very good job, I believe, of maintaining discipline within the general fund. Spending on only mission-critical issues and discretionary or non-necessary spending has been maintained. I'm hopeful that that process will carry through. I am somewhat wary about what happens as we get later into the year and we open the pool. There will be some expenses that we have in our budget, but there may be some additional expenses having been shut down as long as it has been. I'm not going to worry about this until it happens, though. Though what's been saved to date is basically 10% of our budget, and I commend all of the managers in the general fund departments for that effort. $1,087,000. Always want to highlight those who do a really good job. Chief Edmiston, twice now tonight, folks from Sergeant Parsons and myself, doing a great job managing the HPE budget. He saved us over a quarter million dollars. Followed closely by the pool not being opened last year, and then court, which is managing their expenses as well, too. Significant savings to date. General fund balance, right now, it sits fairly good. I will say that I'm concerned of where we might be in the next few months as we get towards the end of the year. But I'm hopeful that some of the stuff with the American Recovery Act will kick in within 60 days before year end. We'll be talking about what might and might not happen there, but we are comfortably over our minimum reserve requirement now. Talking about our utility and street funds, street fund is doing very well. If I can find my notes, they actually got some revenue this month, and they received their $133,000 state allocation from the highway fund. The utility fund is doing well from the standpoint of the resources. Utility for water is 74% of their budgeted revenue for the year, so they're running just a little bit ahead, which is a good thing. HDS, you can see, at 3% over on resources, 6% under budgets. Our superintendent's doing a good job of managing a difficult situation, and the regional water fund's a little down on the revenue. I think that has to do with weather, but they certainly are down a little bit on expenditures as well. So things are looking good there. Then we have our capital improvement projects. Ridgeway Waterline, you might have noticed there's some streets that are showing detour signs off of, not hiding.
Hermiston Avenue.
Ridgeway. Well, it's Ridgeway Street, but we drive down Hermiston now. They have, they're digging up the street, big time. But there's avenues of that money being spent, so we haven't spent a lot of it yet, but it's about to get there. Everything else, pretty much on track, not a whole lot of expenditures because those are going to be projects due to spring and summer. Our projects for the other city capital projects, you just heard about the airport apron rehab. Riverfront Park rebuild will probably be started, moving the parking lot and other facilities, playgrounds, the beginning of June, so that's out there in the future. Library of innovation, I would say for all intents and purposes, it's complete, but for just minor cosmetic things out at the new entrance from the rear. New city hall, if you haven't been by, it's changing every day. They took down the Landon Building in less than 45 minutes. I was shocked how fast that building came down. That Fugland rebuild is, I believe, still targeted to open up on Memorial Day weekend. And with that, I'd be glad to stand for any questions you might have on this month's financial report. I apologize for it being so late. But when the first of the month is on a Monday, and I have to have a program through the city recorder to get on the agenda by Wednesday that week for the next meeting of the councils, I couldn't do it. So hopefully I'll be able to do better in the future. So hopefully I'll be able to do better in the future.
Kay, any questions for Mr. Kay? Thank you, as always, for a report and keeping us financially safe and out of trouble. Are there any persons present who wish to comment on budget or financial report? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to accept February Financial Report as presented.
Some of them.
Second. Moved by Ms. Davis, seconded by Mr. Harden. Roca?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And motion passes unanimously. Next, Goal Setting Report Adoption. Mayor Anderson?
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. The annual goal setting is, has been a great process, in my opinion, and again, another good year to talk about the things we have accomplished and the things we look forward to working on and accomplishing. The report, again, looks very nicely done from a cosmetic standpoint, but also there's some real substantive goals and things to move forward on and work on. I'd like to summarize a few of those. So overall, goal areas, development, engagement, and communication infrastructure, so again, to get better at communicating with the public, and there's a number of actions that we'll be working on. Exercise fiscal prudence, that's become Mr. Kay's favorite phrase to use now, so, and just making sure that we keep the financial house in good order so that we can continue to provide services. Support the development of housing, and we had a lot of discussion about that tonight, so again, working on that in a lot of different ways. The green property and then infrastructure improvements to continue to assist in that effort. Investing, the fourth goal, investing in transportation infrastructure, again, to help people get around, help traffic to flow better as we continue to grow and increase the number of trips that take place within Hermiston. The fifth goal, community partnerships, I think this is going to be a really interesting set of discussions, a lot of different ways to, for the city to engage with other partners in the region and within our community to try to continue to make this place a better place to live for more people, for a wider range of people. So then goal six is city facilities, and one of the interesting ones there is just exploring options to better connect our own facilities, be able to get better within the city, and then what other options there are out there. I know this is a priority of both the federal and the state government as well, there's a lot of potential funding sources, so we'll be exploring those as we come forward. That's a quick summary of the various goals, and the report was in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Question for the chairman?
At the next meeting of the 2021 focus group, coming up soon?
Yeah, that will be on April 8th.
Okay.
How long is that going to be?
It'll be at Eotech, yes.
Any other questions? Any person present who wish to comment?
Just kind of a comment real quick, and kind of building off the mean that we just had last, City Manager, but with the American Rescue Plan that's coming up, or that's already gone by, if there's any opportunities for funding or to accelerate some of the goals that we have, like if there are any like projects, capital improvement projects, Raven Street Park, things that could be done, I think that'd be also in the city's interest to see if we can bid for those if there are grants or anything available for that.
Absolutely, and we have a meeting scheduled in a week or so with Mr. Kay and Mr. Morgan and myself to kind of finalize a plan and do a brainstorming, different things that we can do with that money to make it the most, you know, make it the best use for the community, as well as exploring all of the, there are a lot of other pots besides the money that will come directly to cities, but that we could potentially have access to, so we'll be making just some recommendations and kind of giving the council an idea of a plan of what we have by going forward, hopefully at either our next meeting or the second meeting in April.
Thank you, City Manager, because I know even though we haven't done a specific city allocation, and I understand the free money, somebody has to pay for it, but it'd be great if that money comes this way for our projects here specifically.
Correct.
All right, any other comments? All right, so, and can I get a motion to adopt the 2021 Goal Setting Report as presented?
Some move.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Spicer Kuhn and seconded by Ms. Brown. He is forward. Roca?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Member Ed's Committee Reports, any city committee reports for later reports?
So we had Hack's Hispanic Advisory Committee, and Maria, if there's anything on this, please add on, but from my recollection, we did have Commissioner Dan Doran present, and from my recollection, I think this was the first time we had a commissioner come to the Hispanic Advisory Committee, so it was, it was really great, and hearing from him, the projects that the county has going on, and him also wanting to take a lens that Hack has to offer, it was awesome, and excited to see a lot of the projects that are coming down through the county. There's also been a couple other things that were discussed, at Marisol, they're actually offering vaccinations, and vaccinations with no phase limit, and so I think you just have to be 18 or older, and you have to be a member of Marisol or going to that clinic, and you can receive a vaccine as long as you're 18 or over and no, no phase limit, so you don't have to be in a specific category, as long as you're 18 or over and you attend Marisol, then you can get a vaccine. Make sure to schedule a appointment, of course. And I believe that's about it, Maria, is there anything else?
We, I'm down that we'll think our CEO is also selected to serve the Rockwood Committee, that among other things that will be discussed, they will discuss the topic of homelessness and housing as well. And, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, moving on to Council President's Report. I don't have anything today to add to the little order. Appreciate everybody participating in today's work session. Lot of good, lot of good discussion there, some good ideas out there, particularly want to say, Ms. Peters, not by your age, you're on the one-way street, the thing was inspired, so, good ideas from a lot of people. Anybody else?
I wasn't going to say much, but today was the first day back to school for middle schoolers, and I'll tell you what, it was, it was pretty exciting. A lot of the kids were, maybe, maybe shell-shocked off the word, but they were acclimating to everything kind of being new. It's like going back to school again, except midway through the year, in the middle of the pandemic, so not really back to school normally, right? So it was great, seeing all the kids there, the logistics that has to work on the school district is, there is a lot, and so I can say at the very end of the day, I was very tired. We had multiple, multiple periods, kids in the morning, kids in the afternoon, but it was great, definitely felt the energy in the school building, and there's, you know, there are some students that definitely had concerns, you know, safety concerns, and we can all understand that, and so it was really good, you know, the teachers reassuring, the district reassuring, and then as we were continuing midway through the class, you could start to see the kids start to be a little bit more warm with each other, more discussing amongst peers, more discussion amongst teachers, and so it was really good. So I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing hopefully more kids back if things allow. I know that CDC was making a recommendation for three feet space versus six feet space in schools specifically, so we'll see how things shake out. I know there's about 10 weeks left before we hit the end of the school year, so however things work out, as long as they work out the best for the kids, considering their safety, and of course, I think the classroom is the safest spot for a lot of our kids to be, and so as long as the community does their part, and so this is a community thing as well, then we'll continue seeing kids in the classroom and continue seeing a lot of games, so I just really wanted to share that with the council. I know school's a big part of our community as well, and so from the first day, things were great, so I look forward to it.
It is good to see the kids going back to school, that is for sure. Any others? City Manager Smith?
Just a couple of items, wanted to give you a brief update on the City Hall project. As often happens with an old building like that, as they were getting into City Hall, they've done a few more hazardous materials in there than they, than our original report had shown, so we will have, we're already going to get a change order on that to, to take care of those. Also, we're working really hard to communicate with the businesses around the project. The contractor superintendent has been around and introduced himself to all the businesses, and then tomorrow, we're going to hold kind of informal meetings to talk with anybody who wants to come. We handed out a flyer with some of the dates, important dates, and so we're just going to try to keep that line of communication open with all those businesses. The most important deadline that we're looking at right now is, originally, the contractor was going to kind of lock up that west parking lot, what we might call Banner Bank Parking Lot, lock it up for a big piece of, or time, for a long time as a part of the project, but they changed their schedule slightly to go in and finish that as one of the first items, and so they're going to go in, they're going to fence off the parking lot on April, or March 30th, and go in and start working on that alley and that parking lot, and then are hoping to have it open again by June 1st, so get that parking area back in service and useful for the businesses while they're continuing to work on the, on the City Hall side, so we're hopeful that everything goes smoothly and that will work out. And, and then I already mentioned our plans to kind of solidify a recommendation to the council regarding the Recovery Act funds and then any of the other grant funds that we might find that we could qualify for, and about any, if there's any questions, that can be done.
You mentioned that there'd be a flyer that you're handing out to all the businesses, you can circulate that to the council as well.
Sure, I can, yeah, I can send that to you.
Any other comments, questions for Mr. Smith? Seeing none, return.